We'll give it about one more minute.
Okay, we're going to call the workshop to order. I have a roll call, please.
Bachman.
Here.
Henning.
Here.
Gorman.
Here.
Merkel.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
Lieberman.
Here.
Stevens.
Here. Okay, Mr. Koontz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everybody. We're going to get this evening kicked off with doing a workshop on the five-year economic development plan. If you guys remember correctly, in 2016, I started in March of that year, and one of the first things that we did as a development department was start working on a five-year economic development plan. And really, the purpose of it, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get this thing to go. Thank you. We wanted to figure out where we'd been and where we wanted to go as a community. Being a new staff person coming into the city, sometimes it's difficult to come up with a plan for the next year, let alone for five years for development. So we really wanted to take a holistic approach and figure out where the city of Clayton had been as a community and where the community wanted to go as a whole, you know? How did everyone in the community feel about the future of the city of Clayton? What did they feel was important? And there were several different things that we felt needed to be addressed, and really the reason for that was to really start working on the foundation. At that time, the city of Clayton had been a city for about 16 years, and we felt that there had been a lot of good things that had been done in the city, and we wanted to build upon that. But at the same time, we wanted to figure out what those items were and how we needed to move those things forward. So we started forward, next slide, please, with a template. And the template for that five-year economic development plan in 2016 was a smart growth philosophy. Now, people hear smart growth philosophy, and they think, you know, that people are looking at a map and they're saying, well, this is a good spot to do some development, and here's a good spot. You know, it's someone's idea of what smart growth is. Smart growth, the smart growth philosophy actually comes from a real document about smart growth, and it lays out a template of how to develop a plan for small communities. It comes from the EPA's Office of Sustainable Communities, and the article that the template comes from is called Framework for Creating a Smart Growth Economic Development Strategy: A Tool for Small Cities and Towns. And that document was published in 2015, so when we were moving forward with our 2016 five-year economic development plan, we thought it laid out a nice template for how to move the city forward for the next five years. And really, what the smart growth philosophy does is it lays out the template, and it identifies those four things underneath it. You know, you select focus areas, you define the context, you define goals, and then you select the right tools. And from those, you select tasks that you work towards as a community in terms of developing your city. And so when we were looking at the city as a community, we looked at North Main Street and the Salem Avenue National Road corridors. Those were the three, you know, just really obvious corridors that we looked at that needed to be developed in terms of commercial development. The context, it's all about what I just said, it's about knowing where we've been and where we need to go. The best way to do that is looking at your planning documents. It's about looking at, you know, your land use plan, your zoning code. When we looked at the North Main Street corridor, we looked at hodgepodge of zoning districts, different mixed match of lot sizes that had different types of commercial designations. So was there something we could do about that? And then we had goals, you know? What were those goals? I've said it before, you guys are probably sick of me saying it, but 75% of economic development is about retention and expansion. It's about taking care of your existing businesses in their times of need, so when they want to expand, they come to you, and they want to stay in the community. It's about attracting the new businesses. It's about eliminating blight. If you remember, that was one of the big things five years ago, was that there was blight throughout the city that we needed to address. And there was tax and liquor property opportunities. And then there was selecting the right tools. And again, I touched on that, land use policy, the partnerships with Montgomery County, the state of Ohio, business development, all those different things. That's what went into the 2016 plan. And I remember when I was finished with, you know, giving the presentation, then I was actually standing over where Martina's at right now, and a couple of people said, look, Jack, it sounds like a planning document. It sounds like all you guys are doing is doing a bunch of planning. And I said, to be honest with you, if you're going to do development, you have to have a plan. And yeah, it's heavy on planning, but there's some specific development goals, too. So we moved forward with it.
Next slide, please.
So how successful was that five-year development plan? Here it is. And to be honest with you, for a community our size, over 13,000 people, for a community that's been a city for now just a little over 20 years, the last five years have been pretty impressive in terms of accomplishments. Besides those planning documents that we updated, all three of those documents that we wanted to do, we've accomplished that. We've had $21.3 million of capital investment in the city, 40 new businesses, approximately 300 new jobs created. The development department has reined grants that have been successfully awarded at $3.6 million, bringing those revenues in for development and public utility and infrastructure projects. We've had three new medical office buildings open their doors on North Main Street, two new commercial buildings on Salem, one on Hoke. Village of North Clayton is now under site control by a proactive developer, and we've raised almost 12 residential and commercial buildings along North Main Street. That's just one part of it. Now, the second part of that, this is that business retention expansion thing I'm talking about. One of the things that we realized early on was that our existing businesses, our existing business community felt that they needed more attention. So we created programs and projects to try bringing them onboard and for them to feel like they were a part of the Clayton community. We created the Business Meat Program, the Welcome to Clayton Business Packet, the Business of the Month Program, the Small Business Spotlight Video Program, and now we have the North Main Street Exterior Facade Grant Program. We took some properties under control at North Clayton. We've rezoned properties along Salem Avenue for industrial use. We've worked this plan from the first year to this year, task by task, and this is the result. Now we have currently four new residential developments in the planning process. It represents 75 to $100 million worth of possible investment to the city. That's a direct result of having this plan in place and staff working it. And I can sit up here and say, yeah, you know, success. Well, listen, and I show you guys this every single year, next slide, please, on the development department's annual report. We lay these tasks out at the beginning of that plan. We had every year planned out from 2016 through 2021. It's an 18-month time period because some organizations have fiscal years that start in the middle of the year, and we have overlap. But if you look at all these different tasks, and you can go ahead and flip again, every single year, we had specific tasks, and it was from planning to actual development projects, from commercial, new development on North Main Street, to Salem, doing business walks, reaching out to the communities. Every single year, we hit these benchmarks, except Village of North Clayton, it was a little bit of a struggle. I was really hoping to have a commercial project out there by now. I was hoping to broke ground on residential by then, by now, but we've been working that process the whole entire time. Next slide, please. And this is the last year. I mean, this isn't me paying lip service to the plan, except it is. The plan worked. You can see that when you look at the numbers of successes that we've had over the last five years. This is us working the plan strategically, task by task, and listen, some of these are vague tasks because, at the end of the day, development is a result of what the economy's doing, what the flavor of the year is, what retail. Listen, COVID threw a heck of a wrench into the whole thing. Retail and restaurant business, it's flat right now. I mean, it's just not happening. There's all sorts of different things that play a role as you try to develop a community that you have no idea, but with that being said, we've worked these tasks from beginning to end. So that leads into now. One of the last tasks, or one of the first tasks for the fifth year, was creating a new economic development plan for five years. Next slide, please. So moving forward, how do we do that? Well, this was a plan we actually developed in May because on our tasks, we were supposed to start it in May. So we worked it in on May. There's going to be some things on here, you're going to say, well, listen, you guys have already done that. Well, yeah, because we started working this plan in May, and we've been working it, and that's what we do. We're staying with the smart growth philosophy, and the reason being is that it's a proven measure specifically for small communities about finding strategic plans to move forward for the betterment of the entire community as a whole. But we're adding some things. Every time you do a plan, you need to adjust, you need to make changes in order to give yourself the best opportunity to be as successful as possible. So we're mixing the smart growth philosophy with a place-making philosophy, which is something we've been doing, and I'm going to touch on both of those in a few slides, but so we're adding those two as the main components of the template for the five-year economic development plan. Select focus areas. We're continuing to do Salem, North Main Street, and National, but we're adding Hoke Road to the Salem Avenue focus area, and we're adding residential as a focus area specifically for the desire to increase the population of the city, and we'll touch on that in a little bit. The context, we know where we want to go because of the planning documents that we've passed. Identify current assets and barriers. We're going to touch on that in a little bit. It's very important when you're doing a plan to know what your strengths are and what your weaknesses are. You develop tasks around both. You need to accentuate your assets, and you need to be able to limit and fix and repair your barriers. So both of those things, it's very important to know what they are and then build upon them. Define the goals. The goals will always be about retaining businesses, working with the business community, and attracting new businesses. But it's also we're adding increased population, and then including with the Plan Clayton Implementation Committee's recommendations. That's something that Seth is working on right now from that presentation a month ago. He's going to create projects for the next five years, and so that we can introduce those during budget conversations and stuff. So that's another component that we're adding into the five-year economic development plan. And then to select the right tools. Again, it's about land use policy. It's about using the Plan Clayton Implementation Committee's recommendations. That's a board that was made up of residents in the community that city council appointed. Those are residents that looked at the documents at hand and made recommendations to staff and city council on what needed to be done. We're going to use that. That's the whole purpose of having a plan and ask people for recommendations, so that we can use those aspects of the recommendations to build upon. And then again, brownfield and infield development along North Main Street. We realize that's very important, that in order to redevelop North Main Street, we need to get site control and to do redevelopment efforts. There's transportation recommendations and different types of things like that. So all those scenes are included with this plan. Next slide, please. What does all this mean? I've thrown a lot out at you once. So what is the smart growth philosophy? I told you guys, you know, it's a simple thing, but again, it's a template. It is not something that I created. It's not something that, you know, city staff sits in the back and just darts at a dartboard to figure out where we're going to develop. It's a template that is laid out from the EPA about sustainable communities, about how to grow. And the reason the growth is important, because if you're not growing, you're not going to be able to sustain your service levels. You're not going to be able to sustain all the different things that you offer your residents as a community currently. Service costs continue to go up from year to year. If we're not developing as a city, if we're not growing as a city, we're failing because growth is essential for any community to thrive because you have the service level costs that continue to go up. We have different needs that develop as new residents and businesses come in. We have to continue to grow. Do it in a smart way. Now, does that mean that it's a smart way that every single person agrees with? Absolutely not, and I'm not going to stand up here and try to convince every person that everything's correct. But we have to do a plan. We have to have a plan in place, and that is what smart growth is. It's about identifying the assets and the barriers, selecting the tools, selecting the focus areas, and then you build a plan around that. And that is what template we're using for this particular plan. Next slide, please. And then place-making. Why is place-making important? This is something we've been doing for a while now. If you ask Amanda, one of our first conversations, I believe, we had was when we met, I said, listen, I am not the economic development director. Everyone calls me the economic development director. That is not my title. I'm not the economic development director. I'm the director of development. Development being economic and community development. You have to have both. One builds off the other, and that's what place-making is all about. It's about creating opportunities for your residents and your businesses to grow as a community, services that families enjoy and like. And it's about telling a story. The best way I can do, as an analogy, and if you bear with me, it's like a Thanksgiving dinner. It's about setting the table. It's about making it look nice. If you have a crappy table set up, if you have a couple of card tables set up with rips in the fabric, you have two cups, and you have eight people coming over, the silverware's on the ground, it's dirty, there's no napkins, and you're serving pizza rolls, which I like pizza rolls, don't get me wrong, and some other things, and there's dirt in the glass, that's not a very attractive thing that makes people come over. Now, if you want a bunch of people to come over to your house for Thanksgiving dinner, what are you going to do? First, you're going to tell them about all the food and all the different stuff that you have. I got a turkey, I'm going to smoke a turkey, I'm going to roast a turkey, I want to have mashed potatoes and sweet potatoes, I'm going to have pumpkin pie and pecan pie, I'm going to have all this different stuff, and you're going to have a nice table, and you're going to have a table over here for the kids so that they don't, you know, get bored with the dog conversation.
About a week.
Usually around 5:00. You're going to have the football game on for the people that want to watch football. You're going to have coffee on so people can stay awake. You're going to have activities for the kids to do after dinner. You're going to have all these different things to do to try to make it as attractive as possible. And that's what place-making is all about. It's about creating a community and then marketing that community to outside people so that it becomes a community where people want to live, it becomes a community where people want to do businesses. And that's why place-making is so important. It is why, over the last five years, the development department has done all these different types of community outreach, created these different programs, the VIP beautification, the Labor Day fireworks has been going on for five years now, moving in the park. Sweep clean clean is not something that's new, but it's something that the development department is in charge of. The shredding event is something the development department's in charge of. Costumes and carvings was created. The breakfast with Santa wasn't created by the development department, but we do work with the Parks Commission on that now. The community outreach videos that we've been doing, the parks improvement. Now, I represent staff with the Parks Advisory Commission, the Winter Market in Meadowbrook, all the social media stuff, the development department manages the social media. Why? Because that's the message that's going out to residents. When site selectors and businesses are looking for a community to go to, first thing they're doing is going to the social media page. They want to see what type of programs are out there and what's going on with the community. They want to know what type of investment does that city actually have for the residents and for their businesses. So that's why we manage the social media aspect of it. The Public Information Officer, the development department does that. I'm the one who does the press releases, I'm the one who interacts with the media that we get those stories out about. It's about telling the stories, about staying on message the whole entire time so that we're consistently telling the same story. The code enforcement, that falls under development department. The government academy is a new program we developed. Taste of North Mine. All these different things, it's about setting the table and making a community that is desirable. And that's something that we're going to continue to move forward, and that's where Plan Clayton and the different amenity projects and those types of recommendations, that's why it's important, because we need to create the community and continue to do that, because we've done a great job. It's not just me, I mean, it's not me. By no means is it me. It's staff. It's the community at large. It's the elected officials. We have all bought into this, about making City Clayton, I mean, right now, everything on social media, hashtag best place to raise a family. That's not just something we made up. It's, I mean, we were ranked best place in Montgomery County to raise a family by several different organizations, top 25 in the state of Ohio. It's why we put safest place and safest city in Montgomery County. Those are true stats by FBI since 2016. We want to tell that story, so that's what we do, because site selectors, developers, they want to be in a community that is thriving. So that's why place-making is such an important philosophy, and that's why we're going to continue to do it. Next slide. Assets and barriers. So what are the assets? What can we build upon? And this is something, quite frankly, this is one of the reasons why I wanted to come to the city of Clayton, is because I looked at all the different assets that the city has, and these are the things we build upon. These are the things that we need to continue to invest in because the investment in these particular things will have a return when developers and site selectors come in. The location, people ask me, why are we getting so many residential developments coming in right now? Well, I'd like to believe some of it's because of what we're doing and the story that we're telling, but we're at an ideal location, you know? We're at Northwest Montgomery County, where it's had very little investment over the last 50 years. We're located very close to the Dayton International Airport, where there's tons of manufacturing and logistical jobs being created. We're at 70-75. We're at an ideal location for investment. And if there's developers that are looking to locate in Northwest Montgomery County, I want them looking at the city of Clayton. I don't want them going to Inglewood, I don't want them going to Union, I don't want them going to Brookville, I don't want them going to Phillipsburg. I want them coming to Clayton because we tell the best story. We have a strong school system. We work very closely with the schools. Our park system, city council, you guys invested almost a half a million dollars in CIP three years ago. We need to continue to make those improvements in the parks. That's going to be one of our task items because a strong park system was one of the most desirable things from the Plan Clayton process, was people wanted parks. We found out what people want, we need to begin implementing, and we have. The infrastructure, we have infrastructure along a lot of the different areas along Salem and a lot of the different areas where residential growth has been identified in the Plan Clayton document, there is infrastructure there. We have strong demographics. You can't, demographics is something people look at. 95% of our population has graduated high school. A third has bachelor or higher degree. We have the fourth highest median household income in Montgomery County. Those are all real numbers for site selectors. People say, listen, we can't afford some of these price points on some of the humps. Yeah, we can. We're the fourth most affluent community in Montgomery County. That's a real number. This isn't an average median income, I mean, average home income level. You know, we're not being supported and propped up by, you know, a certain individual that lives in the western section of the city. We're not being propped, this is median, this is middle of the road. It's because our families have resources, and we have existing TIPS. We have opportunities to fund infrastructure with developers that come in. Next slide, please. So barriers. These are the things that when we're looking at the economic development plan, what do we need to build upon and how can we fix some of these things? Now, I just said infrastructure is one of our strengths. It is, but we also have lack of utilities in some of our different areas. We don't have utilities, sewer and water, between Smith Drive, which is at Walmart, to Winger. How do we correct that? Well, we do have a grant. We have a $2.6, I'm sorry, $1.6 million, is it $1.6 or $2.6? Thank you. $2.6 million grant that we're going to extend the utilities there, and that's going to help with commercial development in that area. There are not utilities at the Historical Village. That is something that we need to address at some point, and that's not a conversation that I'm going to have today because that's a conversation that could last three hours. But that's a realization of how we need to look at different things. We have a limited commercial base. I wish we were overflowing with commercial businesses. The reality is that we're not. We have, you know, a little over 200 businesses. That's our reality. And one of the problems that we can't grow that right now, we have very limited open tenant space. It's a blessing and a curse. I mean, we're operating probably less than 1% vacancy right now throughout the city. That's great that we don't have empty buildings, but it makes it real tough to bring new commercial in without new construction. That is a real barrier. Lack of walkability, this was one of the things I was identifying in Plan Clayton. People want to be able to walk in their communities. They want to walk in their neighborhoods, and they want to be able to walk to the commercial stuff. They want to be able to walk to the parks. We have ideas, obviously, Plan Clayton Implementation Committee has some ideas for us, and that's why that's important. We know it's a barrier, now we need to start making incremental steps to improving that. Lack of housing diversity. Listen, this is just a real thing, and I realize the sensitivity of this topic, but 85% of our housing stock is single-family. That's just a reality, those are hard numbers. Most of those apartments are over 30, 50 years old. I go back to the place setting. It's about telling the story, it's about offering things. I'll give you an example, and just bear with me, I know the Thanksgiving thing's kind of cheesy, but when I was growing up, my mother always made traditional turkey stuffing, right? With the bread, chopped up the celery, she had the onions, the spices. She always put raisins in. I liked it, no one else did. Stuffed it in the bird, that was the stuff. I loved it. Bird got a little dry, but I loved that stuffing. I loved that stuffing until I got out of college. Then I got married, started having my own family. I'm addicted to stove-top turkey stuffing now. I don't like that other stuff. It's just, it's just not the same. I like the cheesy stove-top. Last year, year after my mother passed away, I'm having Thanksgiving dinner at my house, trying to get my siblings together during COVID, and my sister said, I'm not coming over unless you make mom's stuffing. Why? Because I like mom's stuffing. I do stove-top. I really don't want to make mom's stuffing. I haven't made mom's stuffing for 10 years. I really don't care for it. I think it dries out the bird. I need something, I need that variety. My daughter doesn't like mashed potatoes, the old traditional ways. You know, skin the potatoes, throw them in, boil them, cut them up, boil them, smash them up with butter and a little bit of milk. My daughter likes Redskins, smashed with sour cream, ranch, loaded up with cheese. That's what she likes. My aunt, who also happened to pass away last year, she loved canned cranberry sauce. I hated. She wouldn't come over unless there was canned cranberry sauce on the table. Her husband, who also happened to pass away last year, his family liked oysters at Thanksgiving. I think that's weird. A lot of people have it as a family tradition. My point being is this, you need variety and diversity in your city, just like you need at that table, because different people want different things. People's changes, people's wants change over the years. Something that somebody wants when they're in their early 20s isn't something that they want when they're in their 40s. If we're going to be a city that's growing and attracting new demographic, we have to have more diversity in what the things that we're offering. And that's, again, that's a barrier, we just, that's the reality. That's, if you look at any type of economic study across the globe, they're going to tell you, you need housing diversity so people can age in place. Aging in place means from beginning to end, so that when you're in college, you're a young professional, you have a fiance, married, family, growing the family, retiree, empty nester, senior, that's aging in place. Very few people that I know live in the same structure their whole entire life. You have to have a diversity of housing options if you're going to keep your community strong. And because of what I just said, all those different barriers, one of the hardest facts that we have to accept is that we have limited resources and the fact that we have a flat tax base. It's because we don't have any population growth. It's just a fact, and we need to address it if we're going to realize the true potential of the city. And we've included that with this plan because without growing, without growing our population, our tax base isn't, it's not growing, it's not going up. What is going up is the cost of services. Those are going up. Next slide, please. The biggest barrier that I see and that we included with this, and it's the elephant in the room, and it's not something that I want to argue about or anything like that, but we have an identity crisis. It's just that simple. And I will say this, I think the population as a whole probably agrees on about 85 to 90% of everything in the city. We're like that big family at Thanksgiving that comes, and everyone loves each other, everyone has the same goals for life, they want everyone to succeed, but everyone always, everyone has different ideas about what it means to be successful, what it means to do things a certain way, what is important to them. Those are all things that are different, and that is absolutely normal. I don't need to tell anybody this, I'm not breaking any, I'm not breaking news here, right? We did the Plan document, Plan Clayton, and we worked very hard at trying to get as much citizen input as possible. Were we perfect? Absolutely not, but I'll tell you what, we had that thing open for over six months trying to get input.[1636.04] We did online surveys, we had surveys here, we did articles in the day and daily news, we were on Channel 7 and Channel 2, we were on the radio, we did multiple articles and multiple newsletters sent out by mail to the residents, people that came in, we asked them to participate, we went to the YMCA, we went to the library, we went to Sinclair. We put that out everywhere. Now, I understand, some people, they get something from the city, they throw it away because it's from the city. I get that, maybe I'm guilty of that too. Sometimes people don't watch the news, I totally understand that. I don't watch the news, I don't read the paper. I understand all that too. But the thing is, city staff can only do so much in terms of trying to get the participation. We tried very, very hard to get as much citizen participation as possible. And one of the things, you know, that came out of Plan Clayton, it's a mission statement. "To enhance our, our small town character, preserve our rural land, create environments that support diverse businesses, and build a unique identity." I don't think anyone can argue with that mission statement, because I think if you talk to a cross-section of residents in the city, you're, they're going to say, yeah, that pretty much hits it on the head, you know? Everyone loves a small-town quality of City Clayton, that's one of the things we try to enhance. People want to preserve the rural character of the community. That goes without a doubt. People want to create a community where diverse businesses can exist. But in order to do all these different things, you have to have a plan in place, and no one's going to get 100% of what they want. We actually increased the area of rural preservation in Plan Clayton. If you look at the land use plan, from the 1999 land use plan to the 20, I'm sorry, to Plan Clayton, and look at the zoning maps, that acreage has increased for rural preservation. Now, does that mean that every single piece of land that's out there that's a cornfield or something else is part of the rural preservation? It does not. And I understand that every single piece of property means something different for other people, and I get that. But at the same time, we created a plan based on the totality and the entirety of the feedback that we received. And we tried to create a plan that would benefit everybody as a whole. There are some people that don't want the city of Clayton to grow, because they like the rural township characteristic. I get it. I totally understand. When my wife and I were looking to move, when I accepted this position here, we looked out in the country because we liked the idea of living in the country. I get it. There are some people that want the city to be a hotspot for young professionals, and it's hip and all that stuff. I get that too, because it's very attractive to, to the younger demographic. But we had to have a compromise somewhere in there. And that's the only way that we can grow a city is if we look at this as a totality of the city. I don't know if we're ever going to be able to solve the identity crisis, because everyone has their different opinions. And again, that's what makes us wonderful, and that makes, makes us good. But I think we need to get to a point that we're civil to one another, and we can actually have open discussions and conversations. And we can figure out why we have differences, and sometimes you just have to agree to disagree, but realize that neither side's wrong, in the fact that they feel strongly about a particular position, that they both have what they feel is best for the city at heart. I live in the city of Clayton. I'm a Clayton resident, my children go to the Northmont School system. I am a resident of this community, and I have certain beliefs. But I'll tell you what, the Plan Clayton document, I'm not 100% happy with it either. I can go down a whole, whole page and tell you things I would have rather been in that document, but there's compromises, and there's things that we need to do as a community to grow. And we need to realize, to reach our true potential, we have to accept that. That doesn't mean the conversations end, and that doesn't mean that we don't do the best to make everyone as happy as possible, but this isn't a perfect world, and we really just need to realize that. Next slide. So the goals. Adding residential development. This is, I mean, I've touched on it, Plan Clayton Implementation Committee touched on it, the US Census, I mean, listen, our population's flat. The population numbers were released last, last week for us. We're growing by a robust 10 residents a year. That, that's what we're growing right now, between 2010 and 2020. We're still below the numbers in 2000 for our population. So from 2010 to 2020, yeah, we grew 10 people a year, but in terms of the last 20 years, we've actually shrunk in, in, in population. We can't sustain that a, as a community. We can't sustain the services that we have as, as a community, it's just, it's impossible. We haven't had a new residential development break around since the mid-2000s. And there are specific areas that are identified in Plan Clayton for future residential growth. Again, this wasn't something that our consultant, that we hired, that we vetted, that actually won awards for that document in the country, the national awards. They didn't just say, listen, I think this area is good, this area is good. They looked at where existing utilities were at, they looked at where existing residential communities were at. You know, there is, you know, there's a lot of good things that happened from 2000 to 2016, before I came here. There were obvious things City Council did to try grow the city, because they realized, obviously, Mr. Gorman, you've been here, you know, since that time, Mr. Merkel, there were scenes that you guys did as City Council to grow, because you guys, I'm assuming, realized that we needed to grow. One of the things that you guys did was in 2009, you guys entered into a utility sharing agreement with the City of Union. The first line of that ordinance says, "Whereas the cities of Union and Clayton find it to be in the respective best interest of their residents to identify and implement ways to further cooperation between their cities for the purpose of future economic development." The second one, "Whereas cooperation between the cities will encourage consistent and sustainable growth and economic development." Obviously, in 2009, we realized that we needed to do that, so we did a utility sharing agreement with the City of Union. That section of where that utility sharing agreement is, is north of Sweet Potato though. And I understand that that's in the rural conservation area, and I'm not saying that that's where we need to develop, but I'm saying, there were things that we have done over the years that looked at we needed to grow, and we put in place. In between 2002 and 2005, we extended the water lines from Crestway down to Haber, north on Haber, west from Haber to North Main Street along Sweet Potato. There's utilities, utilities in place for infrastructure, for development, for a purpose. It's for growth. And again, we need to do that in a smart fashion, and I'm by no means saying that we need to throw anything and everything that we can up against the wall, and we're going to do every single type of development. We need to be smart, we need to be strategic. But there's reasons why there's utilities that have been extended by the city and agreements entered into place for residential growth. We need to take advantage of where those utilities are. Because, listen, there is, there's thousands of acres, acres that we're not going to touch that are rural preservation. We're not going to touch them. They're identified as rural conservation, we're not touching them. There's areas that have been identified for development, for a reason, because of existing neighborhoods, and because that's where the utilities are at. The other thing about residential growth is that it not only increases your population and not only increases your, your property taxes and your, your property tax, or your income tax level of the people that are working and living in the city. Construction jobs, when they come into a community, they're paying income tax. All those different construction jobs and all those different, different development projects will be paying income tax to the City of Clayton. Having construction in your city is invaluable. Moving dirt is a good thing in order to, again, increase your payroll, I mean, your, your, your resource level. Those are things that happen when you have development. It's not just residential, it's commercial. Commercial follows rooftops. I know there's some people that don't agree with me on that, but again, you can look at any economic development document, excuse me, and study across the United States, commercial, retail follows rooftops. It's just that simple. It happens. If you want to grow your commercial and your retail base, you need to have more rooftops. When we grow as a residential community, the commercial will follow. Again, more income tax, more property taxes for the community at large. Next slide, please. Just some more things, I mean, and these, I'm not trying to harp on it, but like, you know, I talked to Kevin, you know, everyone here, I believe, respects the heck out of Kevin as a finance director. Kevin told you guys last year at the budget thing, listen, this isn't sustainable. If we don't increase our, our tax rolls, we're going to have to either cut services, or we're going to have to look at raising taxes, and those are not two scenarios anyone wants. He told us that this, I mean, last year at the budget, end of 2020, that's the reality of the situation. You look at our, our credit report from Moody's, I mean, it, it, sorry, I apologize, I lost my spot. You know, with Clayton's tax base, it's satisfactory, yet they are relatively weak when compared to its AA2 rating position. Also, the full value of per capita is significantly below other Moody's rated cities nationwide. Lastly, the total value, full value is weaker than US median. I mean, they're telling us, we need to increase our, our demographics, we need to increase our density, we need, we need more income coming into the city. Now, can any of this, I mean, can, I mean, can this be fixed? Yeah, I think it absolutely can be fixed. I think, next slide, please. I think there's opportunities. Honestly, I think we're going to fix it. I'm very, very excited about the future. Two years ago, I did an interview with the Daily Business Journal, and I said, "In five to 10 years, City of Clayton is going to be the ideal location for, for residents and businesses to be located." And I believe that more today than I did two years ago. It was in the headline. I believe Mr. Bachman shared it on my Facebook page. I believed it then, I believe it now. We are a growing community, and we are just ripe for super success. But we need to do stuff. So we set a goal in this particular plan. We want to increase the residential population by 2.5% over five years and 5% in the next 10 years. Honestly, I think we're going to exceed it, but I also want to be reasonable. I don't want to set some crazy numbers, and then you guys in five years look at me and tell me I was a big failure. But, yeah, I mean, I think we need to have consistent and slow growth. Smart growth. That, that's what we need to have. We've also added something that was a recommendation by the Plan Clayton Implementation Committee about creating an agent-in-place housing policy, so that's one of the task items on the first year. Because it's something that the Plan Clayton Implementation Committee recommended, we think it makes sense, because sometimes, listen, I'm a staff person, and I get it. You know, sometimes it's Jackson's up there spewing things. I totally get it. But I think having a document in place by some professionals to actually study things and say, listen, here's real science. Here are the real numbers, and this is where we make recommendations for you as a city. So we think that's important, so that's something that we want to include with the five-year economic development plan. And I've already touched on the fact that residential growth is going to lead to commercial and retail growth long-term. Next slide, please. The other goals. Again, we're always going to be supporting our existing businesses. We're hoping to get the business meet and greet back in action this year. It's something, you know, the last 12 months with COVID, it's been tough, it's been tough for, for our businesses. It's something, one of the reasons we started the small business video outreach was because, you know, we're trying to do anything, you know? We sent emails as much, and as soon as we found out about resources, we sent them out to, to the business community. When businesses needed help, they, they knew how to contact us. And we want to continue to grow our existing programs for the businesses so that they know where we are and if they need help. We really want the Main Street Commercial Facade Program to be super successful. I've spoken with six businesses so far, I've had no applications, but I really think in the next few months, we're going to have at least one or two applications in. We have to attract new commercial investment. I mean, it's just that, that's simple. And there's some strategic areas that we need to identify for the city to control. We've talked about this ad nauseam between Council and myself, and that's something that are going to be tasks on the five-year economic development plan. And again, implementing the, the community amenities identified in the Plan Clayton Implementation Committee. That's about placemaking, again, about building that brand, improving your parks, walkability, all those types of things. Next slide, please. All right, moving forward, I'm sure you guys are excited that we're getting to the end here. So here are the action items. And I'm just going to go over them real quickly. So, year one, that's May this year, again, that's why I said, we've been working on this since May, through December '22. Rolling out that grant, we rolled that out right after Memorial Day, developing housing policy, we just touched on that, local business support, I just touched on that. Village of North Clayton new kickoff, we're really hoping that we're seeing single-family construction this fall. I was speaking with Ms. Kelly a little bit ago, I think we're, I think that's going to be something that we see. Zoning code adopted, that was already adopted, went into effect July 17th. One additional residential development, again, it's about setting those goals. And again, we set this in May, not knowing what type of projects were coming up. Hoak Road Expansion Project, we've already started working with the State of Ohio on that particular project. It has a project ID number, and we've already submitted the scope of work for that particular project, and we're going to continue to work on that as the year progresses. The next item, you know, Plan Clayton Implementation Committee, you know, Seth's working on that right now, we're going to put that into effect. The GIS program, and then the last item, North Main Strategic Long-Term Site Control Program, those go in hand in hand, and that's really developing the GIS program, so we can strategically map out where we're going to, what we identify for possible site control and redevelopment efforts along North Main Street, so we can be as aggressive as possible with that. So that's what we're looking at in the first year. Next slide, please. And again, we're mapping it out, month by month. This is what we're trying to do. Are we going to hit everyone by the month? Nope. But we are going to work these things, just like we worked the last five years. Every month, we're looking, what do we got to do, what do we got to do? And then we're moving this plan forward. Next one, please. So second one, North Main Street Commercial Development, we're hoping to have at least one, you know, secured, and then building a new building on the North Main Street overlay standards, facade grants moving forward, Implementation Committee, again, moving that. New residential construction begins on another project. Village of North Clayton construction begins on the either multifamily or commercial aspect. Salem and Hoak Road, having an end user identified and begin working with them to get them a new construction up. Implementing wayfinding signage, that's about the brand, that's about, that's about placemaking. And then the Hoak Road Expansion, moving that project along. Next slide, please. Again, here's a chart. And you guys are going to see this on an annual basis, just like you do now when I do the annual development report. I give you guys these charts, and I show you guys what we've done and when we hit these tasks, because I think it's important that you guys stay informed on what we're doing. We're just not sitting in the back twiddling our thumbs and hoping that someone comes to us. It's important that you guys know what we're doing. Next slide, please. So year three, new construction on Salem, Hoak Road area. And when I say Salem, Hoak Road, I'm talking about either Salem or Hoak. I'm not talking about the intersection, because we included Hoak Road as that, as, as one of those target areas. Village of North Clayton, the construction beginning with commercial multifamily. A new, a second new site development on North Main Street, the second year of Plan Clayton Implementation, beginning the second phase of North Main Street, because that's something that came out in the Plan Clayton Implementation, but that's a bigger project. And when I say beginning, we're going to have discussions internally about how we can look at, how does that look? How are we going to finance this? How are we going to, you know, what's the engineering for? But we need to move that project forward. It's something that came up throughout Plan Clayton and the Implementation Committee. We need to extend, we need to finish one of those phases. So that's something that we're throwing in there. A second, new residential development under construction, and then implementing the new park signage and landscaping at the parks. Again, that goes back to the Plan Clayton Implementation Committee. Next slide, please. Here's the chart, you know, for as much as you guys want to see what's in three years. So year four, second commercial user along Salem or Hoak, new Village of North Clayton Commercial Multifamily, end users opening to the public, North Main Street site control, so we're, you know, at that point, and, you know, some of these I'm hoping to have done a year or two early. But, you know, getting some site control along North Main Street, having a third project breaking ground on North Main Street, or at least identified, third year Plan Clayton projects, Clayton Parks, parking lots and paths, that's an example of a project that probably is going to be happening sooner. Again, we did this in May. We've had some opportunities for some different resources and grants that we've put in for, specifically for Clayton Parks, parking lots and paths. So this may be an, a task that we're able to get finished earlier, but again, it's about building that brand, about building those community amenities. And then finally, finalizing the North Main Street facade program, closing that out is a goal for, at the end of 2025. Next item, next slide. One more, please. So, year five, do a new five-year economic development plan. We do that on the fifth year, and then again, hopefully that second project along Salem and Hoak is under construction, third Main Street commercial is under construction, fourth year of Plan Clayton projects, planning the next steps of Village of North Clayton, because realistically, whatever Windsor, Doyle, and whoever else they may bring in, that's going to still probably realistically be a five, 10-year build-out. That's just the reality of the situation. So we want to be able to be a part of that, you know, halfway through, you know, readdressing, you know, re-strategizing with them. And then again, final plans for the second phase of North Main Street, streetscape, and have an implementation plan in place on how we're going to carry that out. So those are the action items, you know? Next slide. And then, next slide, please. So the conclusion, if you wouldn't mind going one more time, Ben. So, again, this is a continuation of the framework that we set up five years ago. I'm a firm believer in it. I think it's a smart way to grow a city. I think we're identifying economic development and community development opportunities and amenities throughout the community. I think we're trying to do as much as we can across the board. We're not going to make everyone happy, and I absolutely get that, and trust me, I'm not the type of person that likes to be hated. I wish everyone would just like me. But I also realize in my position, I'm going to make people upset because I have to do what's best for the entire city of Clayton, and I have to make recommendations that reflects that. One of the, one of the things about economic development that I think is one of the biggest misunderstood things, besides the fact that my title is not Economic Development Director, is that economic development is a, is a reflection of people reaching out to end users, calling them up and saying, listen, I want you to come to my community, and they come. If I could do that, we'd have five Chick-fil-A's in the city of Clayton right now. And I think everyone would probably like me a little bit more. But that's not how economic development works. Trust me, I've tried. People come up to me all the time and say, listen, why don't you call this person? We need to get this. And I'm not against it. I've tried to call many, many, many different restaurants and end users, commercial, retail. I've had, over the last five years of doing this here in the city of Clayton, I've had one person call me back, and I've probably reached out to over 100. That's not how economic development is done. Economic development is done by those things that we just talked about. It's about place making. It's about creating a community, a desirable location to invest your dollars in. That is what economic development is all about. And that's what this plan, I think we've proven over the last five years by doing it like this, works. And I think in the next five years, we're going to have even more success. But it's by working the plan, it's by working what's there, the framework is here and we just need to continue to do it. I mean, you see what the results were. I mean, along North Main Street, along Salem, along Hope. In five years, dude, that's a lot of investment. That's a lot of successes. Now, I don't know if all of them were home runs, as Mr. Stevens has told me that he wants home runs. But I think they were really solid projects and I think it brought some attention to the community. I think we've done a great job marketing ourselves and I think we're going to continue to do that. I think the 2021 Five-Year Economic Development Plan positions Clayton in a better position than we were 10 years ago. I think we're in a better position than we were five years ago. And I think the future is super bright. And we just need to continue to work these plans. And we need to continue to work the processes. That's why they're there. They're laid out for specific reasons. We can't put the cart before the horse all the time. And I understand sometimes it doesn't make sense, but there's a reason why there's a process. There's a reason why there's a plan. It's so that we can grow in a responsible fashion. So that's where we're at. I really think we're in a good spot to develop even for the next 10 to 20 years. That's what Plan Clayton is about. It's about developing, it's about setting a plan in place for the next 20 years. It's not a fluid plan. It's about, it's a plan that has flexibility because the market and the economies and Democrat, those things change. It's a plan that has flexibility, but it's a plan so that it's in place. So if there's a change in staffing, if there's a change in administration or elected officials, everyone still has that same plan in place. We're still going the same direction. Because that plan is built from the residents and the stakeholders and the business owners. It's not built by staff. That's, that plan is not built by City of Clayton staff. It's built by the stakeholders and the residents and the business owners, the elected officials, all those different folks. That's what that plan is for. And if we continue to follow that, I think the success is going to just come to us and it'll continue to do well. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, thanks for the, all the information. Definitely, we've definitely done a lot of work over the past five years and the past 20 years. So is there any questions or comments for Jack on any of this?
Thank you. I appreciate it. Did I? That was a total Freudian slip, probably. Does that sound good to you?
Any questions or comments? Kenny?
Can you elaborate a little bit because I'm excited about Justin Doyle? What he's done in other communities?
So Justin Doyle is a developer that Windsor has brought on. It's a custom home builder out at Village of North Clayton. They've been doing some soft marketing for the last month or two. They've been doing some research with different realtors, finding out what is desired in this location. And when I say location, in the Northwest Montgomery County region. If you look up Justin Doyle online, they are a custom home builder. Their homes usually top of the line, go for over a million dollars. Now, this is their watermark level, which to them is lower level. It's their affordable level. It still starts around $400,000. They are a very, very nice custom home builder. They've been in the business, the Doyle family, for quite some time. They've been very, very successful in the south of town region. And when I say south of town, Cincinnati, Middletown, that area. Look up Justin Doyle and then look up Justin Doyle Watermark. I think everyone will be very happy with the type of product that they have. They are planning on doing some pre-sales stuff in first week of September. And they're hoping to have a model breaking ground this fall, if not one or two other houses. And they're looking to, they really like our area. We've met with them. They like what we have going on. Quite honestly, it's, I mean, what they told us, we like the stuff we're reading. We like all the stuff that you guys are doing out here. It looks like there's tons of synergy starting to begin and we want to be a part of it. They're looking to buy more property out in the city of Clayton. But, I mean, look them up. Very exciting. They said that they've had a really good relationship with Windsor and other areas of the state. So they're excited about it. They're still having conversations with Windsor about some other opportunities. So I think it's a really good compliment for the city, it's single family. I think it's going to match really well with what's out at the Village of North Clayton right now. It'll complement the existing housing. I couldn't be happier about it. So just fingers crossed that the construction starts this fall. But as I was telling Ms. Kelly, I mean, the meeting that we had, it wasn't about convincing them to come out. The meeting was about permitting. I mean, they're already bought into our community. Our meeting was talking about the process of submitting permits and what we needed from them. So it looks really good for us. Windsor's excited about bringing them on. So we're excited about that. Yeah, absolutely.
Good. Anything else? Dennis, anything else? Craig?
Well, Jack, I just want to say is that the things that you've done over the last six years, pretty much basically far exceed what was done in the previous six years that I was here. Because I will say there was a time that I actually, and this has been, Dave Rollins was city manager, that I was coming to him and asking him what was happening for development because nothing was happening. And he said, I don't know, because the persons that were doing it really weren't doing anything. And it was hard pressed to get information. And I think that was one of the things that really hurt us is the fact that there was a lag time in terms of getting anything done and not really making inroads with things that should have been done that really would have addressed things that we're looking at addressing now. So.
I appreciate that.
Trying to play catch-up is really kind of hard when you're playing catch-up with everybody else.
Well, my goal, and I appreciate those comments, my goal is that we're not playing catch-up anymore, that we're leading the pack. And I want everyone to look at City of Clayton as, that we're the gold standard. And I think we're close, to be honest with you. I think the conversations I'm having with people, I mean, people are noticing what we're doing. And they want to be a part of it. And I hear the word synergy a lot when I'm talking to people is that, you know, there's something building in the city of Clayton. There's synergy coming and we want to get on board at the bottom level so that we, so we can take advantage of it and be successful just as a city is. So, and you know, it takes everybody. It's not just the development department. We have an unbelievable staff here in the city of Clayton, led by Amanda. She lets us do what we're supposed to do. She doesn't micromanage us, but she makes sure that we're on task and that we're implementing what she wants us to do. Randy has done an incredible job with the service department. You can see it in the aesthetics of the community when you drive places with the improvements that have been made with the roads. I mean, look at Salem Avenue. I mean, that was a project that we were trying to figure out how to redo that. The curb and the catch basins hadn't been replaced for over 50 years. And we couldn't figure out how to fund it. Randy figured it out. Our police, it speaks for itself. I mean, we, since 2016, the safest community in Montgomery County. And our fire department with the collaborative does unbelievable work. And Kevin gets awards, you know, a little, you know, all the time, if you ask Kevin. But really, I mean, it's about everyone working together. And they make the development part of it go because they help us. I mean, it goes back to place making and I can't say that enough. And it's all the departments working together to try to reach those goals.
Great job on this. The only thing I'd ask is if we could maybe get like a bi-annual presentation or update with like progress. Obviously, like Greg said, you've done tremendous work since I've been on council and you came on. I was on for four years before you got here and you've done great work since then. But us getting briefed at least twice a year would be really appreciated.
I can do it whenever you guys would like.
And then the only other thing I would have to say is taking into consideration also, I mean, at the end of the day, we have to take into consideration what the residents want. And I know we said that we interviewed 600 people of 15,000 or whatever we have, 12,000. It's less than 4%. So, I mean, my thing is, we, I knocked on a thousand doors the first time I ran for council, but 250 of those people have moved. So I have to go and continue to reach out and meet new people. And I think that's something we need to continue to do as a city too. We can't just say, okay, we interviewed 600 people and that's good for 20 years. I mean, we have got to continue to get input from the residents. At the last Planning Commission meeting of the 20-some people here, none of them were interviewed. And it's just simple surveys, whether it's on our monthly or however, however many times that the newsletter comes out, if it's on that or whatever. But just to get the input so we can say, well, we are doing our due diligence of trying to get outreach. I mean, it's hard for us to say, oh yeah, we tried everything a few years ago when we did Plan Clayton and now Plan Clayton's in place for 20 years. And we know hundreds of residents have moved since then. I know many residents that did the survey have moved. They've left Clayton. So, I mean, we just have got to take into consideration residents' opinions matter.
I couldn't agree, I couldn't agree with you more on the fact that residents' opinions matter. I think in terms of a comprehensive land use plan, it's comprehensive and it's expensive to undertake. There's a lot of things that go into a comprehensive land use plan. And that's, you know, it really sets out the trajectory for 20 years. That's the accepted industry standard and I'm by no means, you know, tied into, listen, it says this or this is what we have to do. I'm all about thinking outside the box. What I think is definitely beneficial and I think that can be undertaken soon is, listen, I think that there's a lot of benefit that when there's issues and concerns from a group of residents, let's come in and have a conversation about it. Let's discuss it. If there's issues, you know, that the residents are bringing to a city council person, come in and talk about it. I think there, in this day and age of social media and, you know, just rumors and fake news and all that type of stuff, whatever you want to call it, it's not beneficial to anybody because at the end of the day, we're only as strong as everyone together. So I think, you know, getting that feedback from the residents is important. I think when there's concerns, let's do it. When we, you know, just the pickleball survey, that was something that we put a survey out for because we wanted to see how it was going to impact people. I think throwing out more surveys, you know, as we move forward and some of the Plan Clayton stuff, you know, to do surveys to find out what the feedback is, I think that makes a lot of sense.
And I mean, just like I Googled these Doyle homes right now. I mean, they're beautiful. These are what, single-family homes like this, they will sell here. People will buy them. And part of the place you were talking about is, I mean, you don't want to go to a Thanksgiving dinner with 20 different types of potatoes on the table. You want a good variety and I don't want to put too many potatoes on the table.
What does potatoes mean?
Apartments.
Okay. I thought you were talking about single family. Because Justin Doyle's, I got you. I think you need to have a variety of everything. I think having 15% of one type of housing is underserving a great number of the population.
Coming in with Windsor and Grand Traditions, that hits your 5%?
Well, I'm not going to debate this. I think, you know, I think.
No, I'm complimenting you. That hits your 5% because of the work you've done for those areas.
Is there any other questions or comments for Jack while he's up here? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Did a good job on this, a lot of work and we appreciate it. And speaking for the city, we all appreciate that. So. Okay, so we're going to, we still have a couple of minutes.